We're going by nuclear time.
Load another hardware there.
See if we can do a twenty minute meeting here.
Okay, I'd like to call the meeting to order for the NISWA Planning Commission Board of Adjustment Tuesday, June 2nd, 2020. Roll call, please.
Linda Gettleman.
Don Jacobson.
Josh Young.
Robert Fear.
Gary Harris.
Brittany Cotner.
Maggie Wentler.
Mark Allen.
Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda?
No.
Being none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
No move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next, to approve the meeting minutes for Tuesday, May 5th, 2020, are there any corrections or additions to the meeting minutes? Here and now, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
So approved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, next item is an open forum. Is there anyone present that would like to speak towards anything not in the agenda this evening?
Anybody online? Yep, just.
Yep, yep.
Yep.
All right, moving on to public hearings, I'll entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, first item is a CUP application 038-19 to construct and operate a common interest residential community. The subject property is pin number 28150598, owner applicant ETOC.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Some motion, uh, since the CU application has been extended several times and we are at or meet the the state mandated amount of time that we can't extend. Since there's been no additional information provided by the applicant for the for the CUP application. I would move that we move to deny the application number 038-19 for lack of information and lack of additional material. You know, uh, exceeding the the time allowed by state law.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Let's do that with the second prelim application to just so we're consistent.
Oh, okay, Mr. Mr. Chair, I'm making motion on the preliminary plat application 03719 for the same reasons. And, uh, the motion would be to deny.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearings.
So move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, new business meets and bounds application 009-20 to subdivide an existing 3.64 acre parcel. The subject property is located 26314 Padre Place, PID 28030687. Owner applicant Luke Bloom. Is Luke here this evening?
Me.
How would you like him to navigate?
Are you comfortable standing at the podium?
Wherever you'd like me to.
Perfect, that would be great.
Luke, why don't you just give us a rundown on what your what your plans are?
Um, my property is split by an easement road. Um, so it's, I'm just splitting the other side of the easement road and then turning it into another lot, basically, because it's something I don't use at all. So I, then there's really not much else to it besides that. And unless you got questions for me, it's pretty straightforward, I think.
Do you plan to build on that?
I do not plan to build on it. No, I actually plan to probably sell it.
And I did confirm that there are easements, um, both above and below for that road because it was not technically a road, so I just confirmed that there were easements. Everyone has one, so there should be no concerns, um, as far as our ordinance goes. Yes, correct.
Yeah, that should all have been taken care of when I bought the property three years, four years ago, or I can't up to, I, time goes by fast, I don't know exactly when, but so. Do you have anything else to add to that, Brittany?
No.
No. Mark, did you have anything to add?
No, Brittany, I'm, you know, the, they typically track A does have, uh, egress and, you know, or access through actually, uh, city of Lake Shore, past county. You can see there is a product right away, hundred from west to the hidden lakes of state, so.
That would be where I would, that would be where the property would be accessed from, correct? By me, it would be my first choice, anyway.
Right, yeah, but then track B though, that must, you know, that, because no provision will be able to track A to access that, but, you know, the track B will still use the current, uh, access, you know, for itself.
Correct, yep, correct.
I have one question about, um, on your, on the description, it talks about the the north-south road that's going through, there's a little existing trail. It just, it describes the center line of the easement, that there's there's an easement there, and it describes the center line, but I couldn't find any place in there that it gives a width for the easement, you know, if there is such a thing, or.
Yeah.
It's kind of strange to have it written, um, describe the center line, but no width.
Was it in the paperwork, Brittany, do you remember? I want to say when I bought it, it was eighteen feet.
Well, it could be.
But I, there was a width, there is a width with it, yeah.
Okay, well, that's that's up to your title people, but.
Okay.
You might want to take a look into that on the descriptions, though, because I couldn't see it.
Okay, thank you, yep, thank you. Yeah, it was interesting to me that I was sold 4.6 acres of property, and then when they did the thing, it turned out there was only 3.5 or something, so I don't know how I lost an acre, but somehow I did. Anyway, yeah.
Maybe somebody calculated it one time that was down to the edge of the water or something, you know, or instead.
And that's, an acre is a lot of land.
Or maybe to the survey line.
I was, I was like, okay, I gave you a point, you know, a couple of points, but a whole acre, so, anyway, different time, different.
Suggesting a new survey.
Yeah, yeah, right, yeah.
It was the first one that needed one.
Right, correct, yeah, I think I think Kramer did it correctly. I've used them a couple of times, so, yeah. Any other questions for me?
Yeah, Delaio's company is very, KLD is very.
He does a good job.
Yeah, they're good. Bob, did you have any?
No question.
Nope.
I would just, uh, only one point, that, uh, when, when this is approved, uh, make sure that we have some language in there that the easement for the the roadway, uh, between track A and track B is not diminished, it doesn't go away in the split. Other than that, I don't have any.
No, I'm sure the future owner will, well, legal description in that regard, so. Okay, well, I'll entertain a motion.
I did too. Their turn.
Okay, sounds like Don just made it. He he voted you. What's that? He voted you. Oh.
I would, uh, I I move that, uh, that we approve the meets and bounds subdivision application 009-20. Um, subject to the fact that the road, um, the north-south road throughout the easement is is specifically noted and on the titles.
Yeah.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Good luck. Thank you much. Brittany, do you need anything else from me? Okay.
Yes.
Okay, sounds great, thank you.
Maybe you can sell an acre more of this thing.
What's that?
Maybe you could sell an acre more of this thing.
I know, I thought maybe I'd drop it on there, maybe you listened.
All right, moving on to old business, a commercial storage building draft.
So the, um, last meeting, if you recall, we had made a motion to get feedback from the city council on essentially just not allowing any future development of this type. It was met with resounding, uh, negative feedback from what I remember.
Wouldn't you say negative?
They were not even open to discussing it. I think the whole conversation lasted thirty seconds after Don kind of gave his overview.
Right, I I think the the intent of the discussion was that, uh, they didn't want no units built in the city. They wanted some built, but they wanted it to be difficult to build in the city. So it was not a blanket, we don't want to want any at all. So I said, we can make it pretty difficult, if that's what you're aiming for.
And so the three drafts in front of you, line eight is really the only one that changes. These aren't the exact drafts that you had received previously. I added some stuff based on comments that I'd received from you all. But line eight is really the one that changes between the drafts.
So draft A is really where we're heading, correct? With with maybe a modification to number eight?
Yep, that seems to be, um, my assertion of the conversations.
Okay. Fine.
Is that more or less the one I submitted originally?
Um, more or less, yes.
I think so, yes. You were talking a mile originally.
My only concern.
Yeah, it does.
My only concern with the mile limitation is they may send it back for the same reasonings, because essentially, we're saying you can do it, but there's no place in the city you can do it.
Right.
Um, I personally lean more towards, um, draft. C, which line eight basically goes into no, not within 500 feet of a dwelling, school, or I believe it was another.
House of Worship.
Yep, House of Worship. I was, I favor that one personally, more for the fact that we're not limiting it to just a zoning or just to a screening limitation or something like that. It's kind of the the surrounding property kind of dictates for us.
And as I read it, as I read it over and over, I felt that way too on draft C, but I also like draft A.
Yeah.
I mean, is there any possibility of combining some of these?
We certainly could, if there was, um, a way you guys kind of wanted to mesh them together, we could certainly do that.
Can we, can we direct the city planner to integrate the two?
You can, but I don't know how I would do that.
At this time.
Um.
I mean, I don't know that I could come up with language to say that you can be within 500 feet of a dwelling, but not within a mile of another, because then you're in the same boat, we're just not allowing.
Five hundred feet just seems like a small number to me, for what we're talking about.
It would be from property line, though, if that helps. It is, it is a small number.
Thousand feet would be better.
I was gonna say, the other figure that I heard was a thousand, which is certainly doable as well. Thousand.
How about, we're talking about dwelling, house of worship or school parcel, I mean, it would be really difficult if it was within a thousand feet of any existing retail establishment as well.
True.
And, you know, having a bunch of storage units next door to your shop or a couple of shops, I think is a real negative. You know, but it's, uh, you want, you want retail space to be more retail space around you, you don't want, you don't want warehouses next door, so. You know, and I think if we added some language in there about retail and increase this, I, you know, from five hundred to a thousand feet, I think we'd be heading for where the council is.
I had a thousand feet penciled in.
Yeah.
Cool.
Was there any discussion about acreage? Did we have, that, I thought I spoke with you about that, with having like an acreage limit or an acreage number that they had to.
Yeah.
For, but again, that's probably the same type of thing. There's only so much acreage in the commercial zone, so.
Right, yeah, um.
So, maybe about the only thing you could play with there is, I'd like us to adding something about retail and change it to a thousand. It might be, might have a whole run.
Yeah, that's good work. Um, with the acreage one. You know, in all honesty, I thought I had included it in one of the drafts. It may have just slipped the cracks, but we can certainly work it in here, um, for sure, because we, it could go either way. If you guys want it, you know, only on twenty acre parcels, it has to be set in the middle, or it can't be on anything quite that big, or.
I guess my thought behind it was, I know we don't allow it in the residential zone, but if somebody had thirty-five acres and you can't see it, who cares?
Yeah, you know. And on this, I didn't, uh, label it into a zone. I didn't put it on our, uh, allowed uses chart, so at this point, technically, they're allowed in any zone.
Okay.
Meeting this criteria, obviously.
Okay.
However, um, now that we're talking about it, I think it should be added when we come, when I come back with a final draft, I'll add that into our, uh, uses chart, and I'll also can make it be a CUP, because I'm assuming we don't want to just have land use permit for that, is my guess.
Mr. Chair.
Yep.
I'm, I'm working off, uh, draft C here, and I had three or four comments, just my feelings. In the number three, uh, with the front yard setback is twenty feet in the, in what we have here, I marked twenty feet up to fifty feet. They give you fifty feet all the way around. In line eight, instead of five hundred feet, I penciled in a thousand. Another thing that that bothers me more than anything else is in paragraph number six. It talks about wood walls or walls consisting of aesthetically pleasing materials. When you talk about aesthetically pleasing, what I think is pleasing is not what you think is pleasing. I think that we have to define that a little bit better, so that we can nail it down, so we know what we're talking about. I look at Turner Towing and we talked, Sid told him, his building had to be earth toned. I don't consider what he considered an earth tone to be an earth tones on the building. So I I just think the the words aesthetically, as aesthetically pleasing materials has to be better defined. And and at the bottom of the line thirteen, the very bottom, talks about pods, boats, et cetera, are not permitted outside of the enclosed storage unit. Now, I take that to mean you can't park it in the parking lot of this place, it has to be in the unit with the door pulled down.
Yep.
That's what I take it to read, but I wonder if we should be a little more specific, if that's what we're asking for. I'm just throwing that out.
Will you, to follow up, when you're talking about, um, aesthetically pleasing, I mean, most of the time, these are steel buildings, they're steel construction. And I've seen sometimes where you can do it where the face, the side that's facing the public road is of a different type. Like, we're, we're building a storage unit right now, and we're doing that, just to kind of make it look more aesthetically pleasing, but the part that is used is steel. That's like a steel shed.
Yep.
So I don't know if that would tie into aesthetically pleasing or not.
When I, sorry, when I typed that in there, that's why I included that it has to be, uh, approved, just because, like you said, it, that means two different things to very different people. However, um, the option also did come up during my individual conversations, that we don't even want to allow walls, wood, brick, anything like that, we want it to be trees. Which is an option, much more expensive option, but it's an option.
That's kind of where I come from, and that's why I spent, oh, if you saw that plan, like, Commissioner Landsberg did on my nickel, but they did a professional landscape plan for, um, here, it gets to me, it says dense evergreen, what's dense? But they did a plan for one, two, and three row evergreen screening, and the X-Y layout, what type of evergreen, how high? And so it's up to the individual, if they're short of space, they can do a single row of denser trees, but they got a little bit more setback, they can do a three row. I'm just wondering, did the council or anybody say they didn't want to add that much detail?
They didn't get that far into the conversation.
I'd like to see natural screening, and those details called out, allow, allow developer to do a single or two or three row, uh, evergreen screen.
Do you have that, so you can define like foot? I think that's, I mean, they have to define.
This is scale drawing, it was, you know, it passed me two, three hours labor, at John Landsberg did it for me. And, uh, we can distribute that if you want.
It was in the last packet.
Okay.
That's these photos.
Yep, yep.
Yeah. I'm a big fan of natural screening. Yep. And that's what we did.
You always have someone who's gonna come in here and try and go around and, what we were thinking, we have in here, they'll go around it. So the better we nail it down, I think the better we are.
Okay. Any other suggestions?
I like the idea of of making it mandatory to have a natural screen, any one of these traces with dense, uh, mature trees brought in. Yeah, it's gonna cost money, but then, we're talking about making things a little more difficult for people.
Yep.
Uh, then you better think twice about putting up a storage area, because we're gonna make it a requirement to have, you're gonna have some type of period, it's gonna be natural.
And it's consistent with our comp plan, too, so.
Yes, yes.
I think that personally, that's the way that I would like to go, however.
And that, that would certainly, um, that's certain, well, trees are, they're aesthetically pleasing, you know?
Yeah.
Um, that would really help define that.
Are we going to force them to put up natural screening and a fence? Because I think any one of these units are gonna have fencing on them, just for security.
Yeah.
So they'll have a wire fence, maybe, with slats, plus the natural screen.
But the fencing is up to them.
Yeah, it's up to them.
Right, I'm just saying that they're gonna end up with two.
Well, that could be behind the trees.
I'd like to see the trees between the the road or the other adjacent property, trees come first, if they don't put fencing inside that, fine.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, so we're adding screen, and we're adding thousand feet instead of five hundred.
Want to discuss the thousand feet? Is everybody comfortable with that?
Yeah. And is everyone comfortable with the, uh, twenty feet becoming fifty feet on line on three?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
One final question, uh, in what zoning district are these gonna be allowed?
What was the question?
In what zoning district will these be allowed?
I guess I would volley the question to you guys of, we've made it so stringent that do we, are we very concerned with where we allow them? Do we blanket it, like, you want to buy a hundred acres in a residential area and put them up? That's kind of your thing, or do we just want to take that off the table? Yeah.
Well, my feeling, they they shouldn't be allowed in the residential district, maybe the others, but not residential.
Anything, anything but residential.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Hang on a minute.
Of course, then you come back to the situation that Josh talked about before, you got, you got urban residential zoning, and you got a piece that's thirty-five acres sitting right in the middle of it. You know, it's all backed up, you know, to others.
What if we added a line item fourteen and stated, um, any residential zoning, the setbacks increase to a thousand feet, or five hundred feet, or something crazy? I don't know.
We're back to a mile again.
Right?
Hypothetical, you have this forty acre parcel, and you put sort of units right in the middle, and you go to do a lot of it.
Yeah, and that happens, it happens. Or do we just want a residential, just off the table?
I I think it's safer.
Okay.
There may not be any parcels of land like that in the city. I'm not sure, yeah, I don't know.
If there are, there's not many.
Yeah, I don't, if there is, I think there's something back behind Boberg's old piece, there's some land back, tucked back in there between Grand Views and, or Coates and his, but, you know, it's a kind of thing that somebody else will struggle with it, I guess.
One follow-up question, when you say no residential, are you guys, do you guys include open space residential on that? Because those are typically the larger lots with the increased setback, lower impervious coverage, um, things like that.
I'm going to you, too.
I, I would allow it an open space residential. I think about it, I take a look at a map and see what that does.
Why don't you do open space residential with an acreage requirement, then?
Okay, well, there, there is acreage requirements on just that zoning anyways.
What is, you know what it is?
I think it's, it's at least a hundred thousand square feet. I want to say it's a hundred and fifty thousand square feet.
What, what acreage wise, what is that?
It's like a.
Well, it's only, that's only a hundred, a hundred and fifty thousand, it's only three acres, three and a half.
So we want it to be more?
I would want it to be more, but if.
Well, you can insert that into the graph when we look at it.
Right.
Maybe have a map with your graph to show.
Okay.
What this does.
Make the changes we've talked about, you're like, county group's council might give it sixty seconds, you never know.
Right.
Thirty-eight years. The board just came up to all, I don't know.
I tried taping them there. Does anyone have an opinion on what the acreage requirement should be?
Two people say thirty.
Thirty?
I'm awesome.
You're open. I just think thirty, you can, I mean, you can usually successfully do it where you can't see it.
Yeah.
If they're, if they're also required to be doing the screening. Are we, yes? Okay, it's possible, it's free, so.
I have a question, um, if we make all these additions and changes that we're talking about, do you think the city council is gonna give us more than thirty seconds to even talk about it?
That's why Don's here, yes.
Yeah. No, seriously.
I'll force them.
I, I did have a couple of conversations individually with a couple council members last week, and my feedback that I received was mostly, you know, we're, we're open to it, we just don't want to say no. It was more, that was mostly the concern, not so much, um, making it super difficult or not super difficult, they just didn't want to just say no. So I think that we'll at least have a solid conversation this time.
They can always take a look at it and say no.
Right, and then, then we're really back to the drawing board.
Draft B, when we drive by, here's the next, perfect, you gotta leave one percent for them this week, or they don't feel value, right?
Right.
They'll find something this week, I don't think you have to worry about it.
Thirty point five acres.
There you go.
Right.
Yeah, that's what should be asked, then give us some direction.
Will, will you be coming back with a draft for us at the next meeting?
Yes, and I will publish the public hearing and everything.
Then if we agree with what's in the draft, then in July, no, at the August meeting, we'd have the public hearing.
You guys don't want to have the public hearing at the next one?
Well, if.
It's, it depends on how comfortable you are with what we've discussed.
Well, I think what, what we've talked about doing, I think we certainly should be comfortable having a public hearing about it, if, you know, there's a lot of people from the audience that are from the community that come in and just raise all cane about it, I mean, you make some changes again.
Yeah, changes come back to us, and the public hearing is in July, and it goes to the council in the July meeting.
Well, if we have a, a public hearing in July, and if, let's say it's positive, then we have more meat, uh, when you go to the city council and say, well, we held a public meeting, and this is what they liked or didn't, or whatever.
Is anybody looking for a project?
To develop?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, constantly.
For storage right now. And then we should put it off.
Especially with the, the ones that just got, I don't know if they were denied, but the application down in Master.
Yeah, was, right.
But they had tried this off first, and we had already had.
All these things.
They're trying everybody.
Yeah.
But that's why.
Thirt up the whole thing.
I think we should, we should keep moving on this.
Yeah. Okay, so I will ensure I have a draft with the changes you mentioned by the next meeting.
You can have a draft, and then you're gonna have the public meeting at the same time.
Yeah, as long as everyone's comfortable with that, which sounded like everyone wants.
Since it's such a, uh, living document, we've really worked on it so much, could you send the draft with it?
No way. Yeah, I could absolutely do that. Does everyone want a Word document copy, or does?
Doesn't matter.
Sure.
Just, is CC a couple more people?
Give them both.
We live in a PDF world. Brittany's gonna make all the inserts, and they're all gonna be correct, right?
Absolutely.
Okay. Alrighty, planning and zoning administrators report.
All right, I know this is your favorite part of the meeting, I'm sure. Um, we did have quite a few permits this time around. Um, we're starting to pick up in that aspect, even though we haven't been really getting, you know, the PUDs, CUPs, those kinds of applications. Uh, we've had a lot of septic installs and a lot of sheds, kind of what our two.
Sorry.
Septic installs and sheds have kind of been the two that, it seems like almost every permit I write, that seems to be what it's for. Um, but other than that, we're still chugging along, which is good, so.
I drove by this, um, one on East Clark Lake Road, because the project description says three short-term rentals for zoning ordinance. Uh, and it's, it looks like it's a contractor who's redoing or.
So.
A lake home there. So what are those three short? So what are those three short-term rentals, what is that?
So we only allow three short-term rentals per year with a permit in the city. Typically, we haven't had anyone apply for the permit, they just kind of do it. But with everything kind of getting more stringent, especially with the county with VRBOs and short-term rentals, we've followed suit. And I don't know if you guys all recall Sean Larson, this is his property, um, he had applied for a CUP last year about this time. And so that was his, uh, application to do so. At this time, I don't have dates, but I told him that as soon as he gets dates, we need to have that information, so that we have emergency contacts set up in case something goes awry.
This same guy that built the big garage?
Yep.
And now he's looking for, for three, three rentals, short-term rentals? He wasn't talking about that at the time.
I think he knew he was caught at the time. The neighbors had brought that up a couple times during his CUP process.
This one from Tony Goble, uh, project location, and you, you must have, it's a pin, um, where is this located, this very first one, Cedar? Tony Goble, GNL Excavage, it's a septic system. Where is that?
I'm pulling it up here, cause I don't recall. Uh, it is on Bass Lake. So this is Nashway here. Do you want me to zoom out, I don't know if that helps or not?
This is wondering where.
Then we did have one new violation, um, for the copper people landscaping, um, place. They had installed three, um, fuel tankers, fuel tank containment, um, on the northern side of, of their property, about fifteen feet from the residential property line. Uh, that was passed along to the fire marshal, we are not involved in that, so.
What is a setback for tanks?
A hundred feet.
Wow.
Unless there are certain regulations within the fire code that you can have like a specific tank, or something like that, that shortens the distance, but I'm not an expert on the code, so I don't want to give you exact details. Uh, the Minnesota Fire Marshal's office.
I wouldn't want those tanks right outside my building, so they will be-
Well, they're underground, they're underground.
Either moved, or they'll have to buy the correct dual lined, whatever, uh, is allowed.
They're bridging, aren't those underground?
They can still be-
The tanks?
No, they're above ground.
Oh, they're above ground, oh.
You can see them from the road.
That makes them too easy to move.
Yeah.
So if they use double walled tanks, they can stay there even though they're still ugly?
Yep, I don't recall if they can stay exactly where they were, or if there was just a lesson setback, but I know it wasn't the full hundred feet if you went with the, uh, double walled tanks.
They still allow single wall tank?
Yes, but it has to be basically a hundred feet from any night.
It's gotta be above ground.
That I don't know for sure, to be honest.
Speaking of a variance, is there a typo on that, that wants to build the twenty-eight by thirty-six shed, Mr. Heinz? You say impervious coverage greater than twenty-five percent?
Yes, that's a typo, I apologize, I, I changed on his actual permit, and then I must not have changed it on the one in your guys' folder, it's less than.
Okay, cause I didn't see any justification or art.
Yeah, no, that's my mistake, I apologize.
Variants are cut, no. I caught something.
Good sleuthing.
Yeah.
I couldn't go to sleep the other night. Read these things.
Is she dominoes going up nicely?
Yeah, yep.
Yeah, all right, that's right.
Can we get pizza at this meeting?
Yeah, not at the meeting.
They should be open pretty soon, I would think.
I believe so, last I heard, their goal was the end of May, but I haven't, um, I haven't talked to Cory since.
They probably want to be open for Fourth of July, I would think.
Yeah.
Um, have we heard anything more about Minnesota, uh, inboard, what's it called, inboard sports?
Not yet, I haven't heard from them, um, in the decision letter that I sent them, I did include a line item that stated this is not a building permit, you still need to, um, apply for one. I honestly haven't been back in that area recently, so I don't know that anything is happening.
There's nothing going on.
No, okay, I didn't know if that's why you're asking.
No, nothing's happening, it's just that I drive by the one in Baxter, and I see all the boats outside, and, um, and it ain't temporary, they're always there. And so, if this ever comes up again, we've really got to talk about really making sure that it isn't a huge display outside
Yeah.
of boats with covers on for long periods of time. I know we talked about that, I think it was my first meeting, but, um, so I was just, just curious if we had heard anything.
Their property and development is gonna be pretty difficult for them to do that, the way it's, the way it's shaped, and the way they've got their buildings packed in there. They're gonna have enough trouble trying to find grades up to their, to their buildings.
Yeah.
They're gonna have to take a run at that sucker.
I think this city may see a revised A plan.
Yeah. But I don't think they've got a lot of room to settle.
Yeah, when you're pulling a, a boat.
Yeah.
That's in January, February?
Well, the thing too is, this is before, there was no, it's, it's just a great sharp rate.
Yeah, they're just gonna, they're gonna.
So your rear axle will, or I guess what you're, your trailer's gonna, I, I just, I-
The vehicle.
You have to come up before to do the, the delta angle trees over series, otherwise you're just gonna scrape everything you try to bring into that.
Should be a radius, huh?
Tip the building.
There you go.
Yeah, build a building like this.
Yeah, the whole thing's there.
The water will just flow out of there. I've got a procedural question about that project.
Yeah.
I don't know why, but I've got like five phone calls from Brett Weach, I'm just wondering, guy in that project, and he cornered me, and I said, you know, you were at the city meeting, there weren't any variance requests. Call Brittany.
He's come in for several one-on-one meetings with me as well.
Okay, well, maybe I signaled on you, my apologies, but-
No, that's okay.
I don't know, I should have signaled on Don.
Should we adjourn?
Then on my question about, that I sent to you about the Fourth of July, whoever it was you forwarded that to, I haven't heard anything, but you know what the city's plans are in the Fourth of July?
We don't do anything for Fourth, that's all the chamber.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, so the city's got nothing to do with the parade or anything now?
I know, well, I shouldn't say I know, I'm pretty sure I heard the parade was canceled.
Well, that's what I-
Did you hear that? I'm pretty sure I heard-
I, I assumed that was the case, but I, I just haven't found. No, I know, but they are having-
That was nuts.
I saw in the paper, they are having their parade in Pine River, or back, so one of them appears having the Fourth of July parade, so.
Is the player cracker five and ten K canceled then too?
No, they haven't. Yeah, they've got really strange.
That's a shot, typically, that's a shotgun start, so there's one, though.
I'll make sure that she gets in touch with you.
Yeah, okay, that's fine.
Sorry.
All right, I'll, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
We're having so much fun.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned, we stood a chance for setting the world record.
Don't tell anyone, if anyone asks, it took us an hour and a half.
Forty minutes.
I'm still recording, never mind.
I think we did a thorough job on the subject, the subject is-